All right. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. It is Wednesday, the 12th of, no, Tuesday. Sorry, Tuesday, the 12th of December. I would like to request a motion to start our meeting.
First, would like to make a motion to pardon Ward Three, Councilmember Keith.
Let's start the meeting first.
Yeah. Councilmember Harding, make a motion, start the meeting.
Councilmember Melinda Mendoza, I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And go ahead, Councilmember Harding.
Councilmember Harding, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Ward Three, Councilmember Keith Brooks. And, and I, oh, and as well as Ward Two, Councilmember Irina Hubs.
Do we have a second?
Councilmember Melinda Mendoza, I will second that. Sorry, guys.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Awesome, thank you so much. So why don't we just go ahead and do a roll call?
Ward One, Councilmember Harding, present.
Ward Four, Melinda Mendoza, present.
Monica Casanga is present. Okay, so why don't we go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for the Hale family and for former Mayor Michael Hale, who passed away last week. And so I didn't have a chance to spend that much time with him. He passed away on December 5th. But the little time that I did spend with him, I've already shared this with Mrs. Hale. He was one of the coolest dudes I have met in Colmar Manor. And I only wish I could have been here when he was mayor, because I'm sure he was a cool mayor, like super cool. So if we could all take a moment of silence for Mr. Hale and their family. Thank you. There will be a service for Mr. Hale on Monday. I'll make sure that we share that information on our Facebook and our online website. So if anybody's interested in coming, just you can call me, you can call the town hall, and we'll give you that information. In regards to the agenda for this evening, for tonight, we have presentations, Avio, and the audit. LSWG will be here to do the audit presentation. We have the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes, department operation reports. And then we'll go on to the mayor's report, council member reports and concerns, resident comments. We have a section here for action, new business, unfinished business, and then we'll adjourn. So I'd like to request a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
Councilmember Harding, I'll make the motion as stated.
Councilmember Melinda Mendoza, I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Awesome, thank you so much. So we're gonna switch it up a little bit. I'm gonna ask LSWG to go ahead and do their audit presentation.
I am here. Can everybody hear me? Awesome. All right, I'm gonna share my screen here with you really quick so that I can walk you through. All right, everyone see that? I'm remembering that I can't see him when I share for some reason.
Yep, we got it.
Perfect, thank you, Dan. So as a reminder, I'm here to present the audit that was performed for the year ended June 30, 2023, for the town of Colmar Manor. And so I always like to stop on the audit report and just remind everybody. So you can see here in the paragraph, the fourth one down, "Management is responsible for these financial statements." And all we do as auditors is express an opinion on those financial statements. So you'll see here at the top, our opinion, ex-opinions. "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." So what that means is that the town received a clean, unmodified opinion for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2023. So congratulations on that. You'll see if you scroll down here to the last page, it was dated October 13th, that's when management approved it. And everything was submitted state timely, to let you know. So I'm gonna skip over the management's discussion and analysis, because essentially, it's just a summary of the statements we're actually gonna talk about. We're gonna go to Exhibit A1. And this is the statement of net position. And so what this does is it shows all of the activities of the town. So the top half here are our assets. And you'll see the town has total assets of $4,384,000 at the end of last year. And a lot of that, almost all of that really, is included in cash and cash equivalents and our investments. And the other large piece of our assets, of course, are our capital assets, our buildings, our equipment. And that net value at the end of the year was a little under 2.5 million. So just like all organizations, we have assets, but we also have liabilities. So these are the amounts that are owed. So we have accounts payable, accrued compensated absence, other accruals. And we also have long-term debt. So we have about, I don't know, 1 point, almost 1.8 million at the end of the year. And we'll talk about that in a little more detail in a few minutes. So our total liabilities were $1,911,000. We also have about 12,000 of deferred inflows. The difference between our assets and our liabilities and deferred inflows is what's known as our net position. And so for the town, we have net position resulting from our capital assets, net of debt of about 682,000. And then we have unrestricted net position, $1,779,000. So this you can kind of think of as your reserves. The next statement is our statement of program activities. And what this does, it's interesting, because it's the opposite of what people are used to looking at. Usually you see revenues first, and then you see expenses. But for municipal governments, it shows expenses right up front. So you know, for last year, the total government expenses were $2,119,000. And there's different revenue sources for local governments. We can charge for services, which we did, and we had about $212,000 generated from that. Also, you guys also get operating grants and contributions. The biggest piece of that here in general government, 1.2 million, but our total was $1,456,000. So if we take all of our expenses and we subtract those revenue sources, we come up with an deficit of $452,000. But that's where our taxes and our intergovernmental revenues come into play. You'll see here, property taxes last year, $1,085,000. Income taxes, intergovernmental revenue, nice big amount for interest income, of course, because the interest rates were so high last year. And then some miscellaneous incomes. So our total general revenue is $1,331,000. So overall, last year, we had a positive change in net position of about $879,000. And as sure Dan mentioned, a big chunk of this was recognizing a lot of that ARPA fund revenue last year. So we add our change in that position to our beginning of the year net position, and that's how we ended the year at $2,461,000. So a very good year for the town. A3 is the same statement as for the prior year, because these are comparative financial statements. We won't talk about that, since we looked at that last year. Exhibit A4 and A5, these are the fund-level financial statements. So these are the statements that municipalities are kind of used to seeing. They're more of a current resources methodology. They don't show anything long-term, so our capital assets aren't included, our debt isn't included. So our total assets on a fund level are 1.9 million. Our liabilities are much less, about 90,000. Our deferred inflows are about 45,000. So our fund balance is a little over 1.7, almost 1.8 million. And you'll see the different categories here of fund balance, and we'll talk about those in a few minutes. So here at the bottom is the reconciliation between the two statements, in case you, you know, wanted to go back and forth. So our fund balance was 1.7 million, as I mentioned. There's some differences, and then here is our net position on the governmental level. Exhibit A5 is the sort of A5M statement, right? It shows all of our revenues and expenses on the fund level. And you'll see how it ends, the fund balance is at number 1778 that we just talked about. So one more reconciliation. This is the reconciliation on the fund level for the change in net position. The next several pages, actually 15 pages, are the notes to the financial statement. And management reviews these in detail. There weren't any significant changes to any of the notes in the current year. So there were only one or two I just wanted to mention, because of their significance. So Note 3D shows your, let me get through it here real quick. Don't mind my scrolling. Note 3D talks about long-term debt of the town, so I do like to remind everybody when there's significant debt. Chart here at the bottom is probably the best way to look at it, is the payments that are owed on these three remaining long-term debt and leases. And so you'll see in fiscal year '24, here are the, you know, the amount of principal and interest payments that are due all the way until it's paid off in fiscal year '36. The next page shows the payments that were made in the current year. So these were the amounts that registered that in the current year. And the only other note, and I, I think most of my municipal clients are kind of tired of talking about it at this point, but are the ARPA funds, you know, Rescue Plan Act funds. So I just wanted to remind you that the town received 1.3 million, and we recognized revenue of 1.3 and 75,000 respectively. Last several pages are what most people like to look at, right? The budget versus actual. And so you'll see here, this is the budget that was approved by council at the beginning, you know, right before it last fiscal year started. And there weren't really very many significant variances on the revenue side of things. I think the red light camera revenue is a little bit less than was expected. Some of the grant monies, you know, gets a little skewed if we expect some and it doesn't come in. But here at the bottom, you'll see, we, we expected or budgeted $2,962,000 and received a little over 3 million. So pretty gosh darn close. On the expense side of things, same thing, the categories are pretty well within the budget, or to the good, are usually here, like $1,808,000 for general government, and we only expended 755. But if you go all the way to the bottom, we budgeted for 3 million, and we spent a little less than 2 million. So we did a good job there on the budget. And the last page, just, you know, you're required to not have any material violations, and we didn't identify any during that year, so that was very good. Any questions on that?
Sorry, if anyone has any questions, I'm gonna ask that they go up to the mic, identify themselves, and where they live. Are there any questions in person now? Anyone online? So I guess I'll ask you, Mrs. Webb, and Mr. Baden, what are some key takeaways from this audit report? So I appreciate you going through all of this.
Sure.
I actually sat down with Mr. Baden and with our town administrator, and he talked us through all of this. So I'm lucky that I have that opportunity to do it. But what are some key takeaways that our community members can say, oh, okay, this makes sense?
I think the process itself is one of the key takeaways, right? That the town received a clean audit opinion, you know, for the last several years. That's an important takeaway, right? Just the process of going through the audit and that it was an unmodified opinion. I think another key takeaway, and Dan, you can chime in, is the ARPA money. I think that's the biggest thing that the municipalities are dealing with right now, and that you recognize the lost revenue, and, and that is in your bank accounts. That was a big key takeaway.
Yep, I'd agree with that. The other thing, it's not totally clear from the financials yourself, but if you extract the numbers a little further, as Eva showed, our net income for the year was $1,028,000, which seems like a very high number. But of that amount, about 948,000 was from ARPA funds, you know, that we have not expended yet. So if you take that out, we actually achieved about an $80,000 net income for the year. And at the beginning of the year, we had actually projected a deficit. So you know, that is, you know, very positive as far as the operations of the town, when we budgeted a deficit, and we ended up in, you know, the positive numbers. A couple items that attributed to that, Eva, that pointed this out, was interest income was significantly higher. This year, interest rates, you know, if you look, look at your investments and things, you'd see went up quite a bit during the year. So that attributed to about a $65,000 higher interest income figure than what we had projected. We also received money from a settlement for a lawsuit that was actually on the West Coast, but they included all the municipalities, basically, that are close to the Chesapeake Bay and any other water source. So we received 17,000 from that. We also, on the expenditure side, did not have full code enforcement officer for the full year, so we, you know, had some savings there. So, you know, from going from a deficit budget to a, you know, net income for the year, you know, I think is definitely a positive takeaway. And then the other thing is, is that the fund balance at the end of the year was $830,000, I believe. You know, after you take out the ARPA fund monies. And, you know, a healthy position for the town would be to have a surplus of about 25% of your operating expense. So, you know, a good financial position or a healthy position for a town our size would be to have about 404,000 in reserves. And not taking the ARPA funds into consideration, we have about twice that amount. So, you know, having a income for the year, having a healthy fund balance, you know, puts us in a good position as far as, you know, borrowing monies, if we ever want to borrow monies, you know, that would be looked upon favorably. It also, you know, if anyone's concerned, you know, that the town's in a, you know, bad financial position, we're far from it. So, you know, I would say those are, you know, the two big takeaways I would have from the report.
Are there any other questions or comments? No. All right, well, thank you so much, Ms. Webb. I really appreciate you coming on and doing this presentation for us. And thank you, Mr. Baden, for, for making it a little clearer for us as well, and for engaging, working with the, with, with LSWG to go ahead and do this audit every year. So we appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Yep, thanks, Eva.
Thank you.
Okay, awesome. So next on the agenda, we have Avio. So I'll go ahead and invite you to come up and introduce yourself and tell us more about the, the stop sign at the intersection by the electronic billboard.
Sounds great. Thanks so much for having me. Let me just present my screen. Can y'all see my screen? Just as a recap, for those who don't know, we're a company called Avio, and we build AI solutions to help with traffic safety. Just as, you know, some context, the entire country is facing issues with traffic safety. You know, we have one of the highest pedestrian death rates in the last 30 years. Actually, recently in Riverdale, there were two children struck, struck right near a stop sign, and the annual traffic injuries in the US is 3 million. And so it's something that, you know, the entire country is facing, and when you start thinking about, you know, why is this happening? A lot of it comes down to just driver behavior and figuring out how do you make sure drivers are more aware and cognizant of things? Especially when police resources are typically stretched thin, and it's hard to be everywhere all at once. And so when we started, we sort of looked at some of the unsafe driving behavior in Colmar Manor, in 40th and Newark. And this is a sort of behavior that we were seeing pretty often. It's sort of just like a not really any sort of attention paid to the stop signs. It's one of the reasons why a lot of people were complaining. Here, you see an example where someone skipped the stop sign, even though there was a pedestrian that crosswalk, and then they had to slow down. You know, it's things like these where, you know, you can understand why the country is sort of in this crisis. And so the goal of Avio is to figure out how do we use effective deterrence and AI to help reduce these issues. And so really quickly, just for those who don't know, we have the stop sign feedback product that automatically detects the violation and gives feedback in real time. So we understand the issue, we educate in real time, and then you can deter more efficiently. In terms of the pilot, this is how the pilot worked. Again, we were trying to demonstrate that we could detect this data and have automatic traffic reduction. So Week One was just a basic data collection. Nothing was turned on. There was no sort of deterrent. It was just us understanding the problem. The second week was turning the message board on to flash unsafe stop. And then third week, we had put some additional signage up to help people be aware that they'd be on camera, so to speak. And the goal was, let's see how much we can impact traffic safety. So we put, put together a data report now that we've basically been done with the pilot. But wanted to showcase just generally the approaches, you know, start with understanding with stop sign violations. Second is educate, and third is deter with some of this signage. And here's some videos of what the behavior looked like, a little bit more on average. So you actually saw people come to a complete stop. And of course, you know, I picked out the videos that looked great, but I'll show you guys the data that really suggests how much improvement was felt. And, you know, I do think we've heard from community members as we were walking around the street that people actually felt like there's a little bit more adherence to the stop signs as a result of this program. That was sort of felt as people walked by. I think the chief, you made a comment that you noticed a difference, and so it was cool to see that from like a visceral sense. And then when we looked at the data, we actually saw a big impact as well. So let me there, the data. Okay, so really quickly, the pilot lasted from November 1st through December 7th. And, you know, the first thing I wanted to call out is we have a lot of really interesting data that comes out of this. It's not just about stop signs. We can tell you the total number of vehicles that went through during this period, that one specific direction. It was around 17,000 vehicles across 41 days. 11,000 violations overall, which is, you know, a huge amount of violations. Some of these are just rolling stops and lower intensity ones, but we sort of captured the, the whole number. And then if you look at the average per day, you see about 425 vehicles go through with an average violations of 271 per day. Of course, it started off higher and went lower. In terms of peak times of violations, we saw that 2:00 PM, 1:00 PM and noon were the top violation times. This is a little surprising to us, because we thought it would be closer to the peak traffic time, but I think it tells you a little bit about, you know, if there's a lot of cars coming through, people are forced to stop, because, you know, there's people, there's cars in every direction. When you have times where things are a little bit more empty, people feel the need that, feel that they can skip the stop sign. Of course, these are times when people could be walking, especially children and pedestrians. In terms of the impact, so again, you know, we had one week where we just had the message board. We had a couple other weeks where we had physical signage deployed, and then we had kind of like measured the results. And, you know, the first thing I'll call out is the violations per day. You know, you started with around 245 violations per day. By the end, we were seeing around 163 violations per day. So a pretty significant reduction, that's about 33%. Then we sort of looked at just the number of vehicles that were going through. Did we see any sort of reduction? And we actually saw, again, there's another 25% reduction of average vehicles per day. Now, I know there's some other traffic work, enforcement work being done further upstream in Blainsburg. But I do think as people start realizing there's a little bit more enforcement here, there's a little bit more, even physical signage. It doesn't make for an easy way to like zip through this exact intersection. And then finally, if you look at the violation rate, this is actually like of the people going through, how many people are violating? You saw a decrease by around 19%. And again, that's like the the overall trend is what you want to see is this number goes down, more and more people are stopping as they go through this intersection. And then we also look at the different intensity values. So again, you know, there's some violations, like the ones I played in the videos, where people completely blow through. There's some where people come to kind of like a rolling stop, and there's some people where it's, it's, it's kind of midway through. And so our system actually classifies those different kinds of stop signs to figure out what is the kind of impact between those three stop signs. And so between the first period and one of the last periods, what we noticed is there was actually a pretty significant decrease in the high-intensity violation rate. So we saw a 38% decrease in high-intensity violations, and around 30% in medium-intensity violations. I know these numbers aren't 100%, but what it does is it shows you, even with a 40% decrease, you start feeling a big difference. You start feeling like instead of every other car doing some sort of intense violation, it's actually more like one in three, one in four, which is a significant kind of feeling of safety that gets created. And so what I wanted to kind of highlight is, let me just share a different screen again. This is sort of the, you know, the videos that I showed, shows you sort of what happens after you do a few of the interventions as part of the Avio safety program. But it doesn't totally stop here. You know, all we did was detection of stop signs, the message board, and some signage. If you want to go further, that's sort of like the full Avio safety package. And, you know, there's, there's other things that we can do. So we can detect speeding, we can detect illegal left turns to help understand those kinds of behaviors. We have something called the Community Portal, which I'll walk you through, which helps raise awareness and sort of keeps people honest about what's going on in the community. And then we have more things around deterrence, which is, you know, a stronger message board feedback. So instead of just saying unsafe stop, you can do different languages, which I know is important in this community. Or having things that are like $75 fines, which makes it a little bit more clear of what happens. If you skip the stop sign, you can have more targeted officer enforcement. So we actually have some tools that can help officers give out tickets faster to help with that deterrence. And we also have a feature where you can send letter warnings home for repeat offenders to really just, you know, especially for high-intensity violations, if they're doing it multiple times. You can really just kind of get that message home. And so this is sort of what the Community Portal looks like. It's basically a dashboard that shows videos of intensities. It shows the stats that are sort of aware for everybody to take a look at. You know, this is an example of the officer streamlined ticketing that we can do, where an officer can kind of use a tablet to help understand what's going on and give out warnings and tickets a little bit faster, which is really helpful when you have a small which is really helpful when you have a small patrol staff that has a lot to do. And then finally, the the power of this product, given that it's a trailer, is you can actually move this to other parts of your town. And so after you've nailed one intersection, you believe that it's safer, you can kind of move this to some of the other ones, collect data, have an understanding of the entire town, and keep kind of moving this around to help with enforcement across the town. So that's a little bit about the update. You know, just to summarize, pretty effective outcome here. 38% reduction in high intensity violations, 33% decrease in violations per day. We measured a 25% reduction cut through traffic and a 19% reduction in the rate overall. And I think this probably required almost zero officer time. You know, I think there were a couple of signs that chief had to move around, but apart from that, you know, the goal was to build a product that can help with traffic safety without utilizing too many officer hours. And so I think, at least from our standpoint, it felt like a good result here.
I I've appreciated having this pilot program in town. It's kept me in line, and I feel like it's kept other people in line. Are there any, any comments, feedback?
Councilmember Martin would want, yeah, I will agree with the mayor. It's definitely kept me in line because I thought the next video that would pop up would be me. So I definitely have been coming to a complete stop at that intersection. But the only question I have was, have any of the towns that you've worked with gone with the fine approach, giving out a fine?
So we have two, actually, in terms of the message board? Or actually giving out?
Giving out fines.
We haven't given out fines yet. Okay. The reason is, in the state of Maryland, it's legal to give out fines based on stop sign automated cameras. There's actually a bill in the works to have that pass in the January upcoming session. So we are working on that. Of course, that would make things a lot more effective. But as of now, all the results have been based purely on the message board and the signage.
Okay, thank you.
Is the law that you're trying to get passed, will it make it a municipal infraction or is it a state violation?
It's it's more of a municipal infraction. Like, again, it's not like I'm passing the law. I do think that there's a few senators in the House pushing it. I haven't looked at the fine print of the of those, so it'll follow the same kind of infraction that the existing speed ticketing cameras and red light cameras use. But it's a civil, the civil ticket. It's not something that's like that goes, that creates any points on your record.
Okay, because usually running a stop sign is a state citation or state violation. All that money goes to the state, whereas municipal infractions like speed camera and red light cameras, that money goes to the municipality. So that's good, big difference. So I don't know if you have any influence as to how that law is being presented, but that makes a big difference to municipalities. Because if we're not getting any of the revenue, yet we're doing the enforcement, then, you know, it doesn't really make sense to me. Thank you.
Understood, yeah. Yeah, we, I mean, you know, from our perspective, you know, the goal here is public safety and hopefully revenue can be used to either make towns a little bit more safe or beef up some of the traffic calming measures across the town. And so we'd definitely advocate for that if we have an opportunity to.
So what do we need to know as council members about this pilot and some costs that are associated with this if we decided to implement this in our community?
Sure. So we have two, I don't think I have a slide up ready. We have two kind of form factors of the product, and I'll just speak through them as I pull up the slide for it. You know, there's one version of the product where it's it's a trailer that you can move around, and the trailer typically costs around $40,000 to purchase the trailer. Here, I'll just present the slide here. Awesome. So we have these two form factors. One is a pole mounted solution. You know, it's great for when you have one specific intersection that you really care about, and you know there's a lot of violations, whether it's speeding or illegal turns or stop sign violations. So the pole mounted solution is the one-time $15,000 hardware cost with an annual subscription of $10,000. For pilot cities, we do offer a pretty hefty discount, just because you guys were one of the first ones to try it. And so that's something that we can talk about. The second solution is a trailer mounted solution where it's a $40,000 hardware and then again, the same annual subscription. Of course, the power of the trailer is you can move it to different parts of town. The chief and I walked through a bunch of towns even before we started this pilot and realized there's a lot of different places where there are violations happening. And ideally, with one trailer, you can kind of cover a lot of them over the course of a year. One thing to highlight is our product will eventually, if the legislation passes, be able to do the ticketing. So it's not like if you buy this, like it'll be obsolete or it'll be moot. It's something where, you know, for now, if you care about traffic safety and you want that to to go into effect, you can purchase this unit, and as soon as that legislation goes into effect, we'll be able to convert the unit into one of those sort of units that also does ticketing and has a different sort of business model around that. In terms of how it compares to other kinds of products, you know, speed trailers are a pretty common product used for traffic calming measures. They typically cost around $25,000 with a 1.5 thousand annual cost. But they only do speeding and they're not internet connected. And so with our solution, it is a little bit more expensive with that price point, but we offer stop sign violations, message board. We'll eventually start be, we're soon going to be adding other features like pedestrian bicycle and vehicle counting. And so you'll actually be able to know how many bicycles or people are walking through this area to understand whether it's a real risk for pedestrians and also detecting features like speeding, not yielding to pedestrians, you know, illegal crossings, all that kind of stuff. And so all of that is included in the price, and, you know, you'll have an online dashboard for you to be able to access and get those features as well.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Anyone online wants to ask a question? Okay, Ms. Dixon, you want to go ahead and unmute?
Yeah, I, um, I just had a question. Good study. I'm not disputing any of the study, but just wondered about the equipment and calibration. I had the occasion to kind of test the equipment, if you will, right? Where I stood at the stop sign and then pulled off, and it was pretty cold that day. So I didn't know if it was the weather or not, but I would get the unsafe flashing. So I'm like, well, what is safe versus unsafe? Or is it the equipment? I just had me curious.
Yeah, so in terms of how the product works and the accuracy rate, you know, right now it's close to about a 90% accuracy rate, which means for the majority of people who have a unsafe stop, we'll capture them. And there are a couple of false positives that'll speed through, that they'll kind of slip through the system, which is if you do stop and go, you know, if it's too dark, if the shading isn't a certain way, sometimes we will still flash the unsafe stop. From our standpoint, the AI is getting better and better on a weekly basis. And so even in the course of this pilot program, we deployed two or three new AI models where the precision rate was going up as it as it went. And, you know, there's, there's, as a, as an AI system, you know, we are running into new scenarios every time we deploy a new location. You know, this time around, for example, we had daylight savings time, and all of a sudden, the 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 light shifted very dramatically. Sometimes we'll see certain kinds of vehicles that we've never seen before. Sometimes we'll have snow like we did a couple of days ago. And so generally, our system is close to 90% accurate, and it'll continuously get better. Now, before we ever do anything like real fines or ticketing, our accuracy rate will need to be pretty high. And before we do any actual ticketing, we will have a review process where someone has to review each video before it actually goes out to the end and violator. So in the current case, given that we're not doing any sort of ticketing, we thought it would be okay to have a message board where, you know, once in a while you might have a slightly oversensitive system. But we figured a slightly oversensitive system would be better than a system that wasn't detecting things at all.
Thank you. And currently, you've done work with Cottage City, correct?
That's right.
And they purchased, did they purchase a trailer?
So they just put a budget request in to purchase it. The town council meeting is actually tonight where they're going to start voting on a bunch of the budget requests. And, you know, next up, we have other pilots going on. One is at Forest Heights. They've expressed an interest to buy as well. So now we're sort of going through those processes as well. And we're actually going to be deploying, you know, we ended the pilot program here, and we're going to be deploying it in Fairmont Heights tomorrow. But they, and they're actually doing a paid trial, because now we have quite a lot of interest that we've started charging for these trials, and it also helps us keep expenses down because we're traveling all the way from California. So starting to see a lot of interest and demand, and hopefully, you know, it helps us keep the road safe.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So if there aren't any other questions, thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much for letting us pilot here and looking forward to continuing to work together.
Will you be sharing that information, that report with us? Will you be emailing it?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes, happy to email it.
All right, we'll stay in communication for sure. Obviously, that the full council, the full council isn't here, but we'll be discussing it. Thank you. Okay, so that's the end of the presentations on the agenda. So now we're up to the consent agenda. If there aren't any questions, or if no one wants to point anything out from the consent agenda, then I'll just go ahead and request that we approve the consent agenda. But I'm just going to give everyone a quick, a quick moment to take a look and see if there's anything that they want to highlight or bring up. Okay, so the only thing that I want to point out. Just on the consent agenda, under the Town Administrator's Report, under General Concerns, Car Wash Lot, notice was received that MNCPC is preparing to receive plans for a gas station development. The town registered as a person of record to receive updates. There have been a flurry of emails and people calling, rightly so. But there is an opportunity. Anyone can sign up to be a person of interest, which means that you sign up and you get alerts every time something proceeds with this application. But we'll talk about it in a little while. The other thing I wanted to bring up, I'm not sure if we talked about it at our last town meeting, the Connected Community Grant that we received, but there's no updates.
One of my last updates, I noted that we received, actually Bladensburg received the grant. It was a joint application on behalf of the Port Towns. The Bladensburg wrote through the Connected Communities Grant Program. Specifically, it provides Chromebooks to individuals under a certain income level per the state program. Comer Manor was allocated 25 laptops out of that. And I just received this late this afternoon that there's a training coming up, so that that would be the update then. But we'll be getting more information on when the laptops are actually coming in and the distribution, how that works in late January.
The other thing I wanted to point out in the consent agenda, is this the first time that we're including a public works report?
No.
Oh, did we do it last, last meeting? Okay. So thank you to Al, our Public Works Supervisor, for including these public work reports in the consent agenda.
I will add, there, there may be some things that seem trivial in there, but I added them because there are things that have been brought up at meetings before. So for instance, what are called fiber cans, which I did not know that was what they were called. But behind the shopping center, you may have seen the giant black kind of tube looking things with wires coming out of it in the street. Those are called fiber cans, and so we hooked them back up to the best we could, because Verizon or Comcast aren't coming out to actually fix the problem. We put them up so that they're no longer on the ground. They won't be kicked out to the street by the people mowing the lawn. So so it may seem sort of trivial, but that has been brought up in various meetings. So just want to want you to know that we've taken care of it.
And then the last thing, I'm not really sure if it would be in the police report, but I have a question. So that kitchen, the Spice Kitchen food truck that's on Newark, right behind the Burger King and the trailer. How do we go about writing a letter or doing something? Because they've been there for the past two to three weeks. And so I don't want us to become a haven for food trucks to like just park willy nilly without actually living in town.
The both are registered to addresses in town, and the food truck, although it looks like it's been parked continuously, does move every day or every other day. And I initially thought it exceeded our weight limit for town vehicles, which is 10,000, a gross vehicle weight of 10,001 pounds or above is in violation. That one and another food truck that parks in town is registered, the MVA has it at 10,000 even. So it's technically not too large to park. The trailer, it was parked somewhere else in town. We chased it around. Now it's there, and we'll address that one. It's got a flat tire.
But the food truck, like, do they live in town? Is there a way to find out if they live in town?
Yes, if it's registered to a town.
Oh, so they do live in town, the food truck?
As does the the trailer that's parked there as well.
So is there something that we can do as a council in the future in regard to the whole parking ordinance that inserts something in there about food trucks? Or is that for like a work session discussion? Okay, work section discussion. So that's it. That's all I have. I don't know if Councilmember Harding or Councilmember Mendoza has anything in regards to the consent agenda?
No mayor.
Okay, if there are no questions, then I'd like to go ahead and request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Councilmember Harrow, make the motion to approve our consent agenda.
Councilmember Melinda Mendoza, I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, so now I'll go ahead and go into the the mayor's report. Just one second, I want to share my screen. Okay, so for events that took place in November, we, is that the first slide on here? Let me just double check. Yeah, it is. Okay, so for events that we hosted in November, we had Veterans Day. And I just want to thank the Comer Manor American Legion for coordinating the really beautiful event at the Peace Cross along with Mayor James of Bladensburg and all the towns that are involved with honoring our veterans on that day. We also, they, they hosted a lunch after the the celebration at the Peace Cross, and we had a really nice lunch there. It was a great opportunity to meet some of the veterans that live in our town. So I, I didn't realize we have so many, but we do. So I just want to thank everyone for their service and thank you for being involved. We also hosted, thank you to our recreation coordinator, Malik Alexander. He hosted a dodgeball event with our police. So thank you to our police department for playing dodgeball with the youth in town. We had a lot of fun, and I hope that it's just the beginning of lots of events, athletic events like that with with our police. We hosted a community cultural celebration. So I mentioned this at our community culture celebration itself. The reason why we hosted this was because a new resident in town came up to me and asked me if we had like a world festival, a world culture heritage festival, and I A World Culture Heritage Festival. And I said, no, we don't. But if you help me, I'll coordinate something with you. And so she took me up on the offer and we came up with a community cultural celebration where we invited everyone to come to. The town hall and host a table the size of this table to come and represent where you're from. Didn't have to be a country. If he, if I wanted to come and represent Queens, I could have had stuff from Queens. I would have had a MetroCard, a hot dog, a slice of pizza. But I had a table that represented the country of Columbia, which is where I was born. She is from Trinidad and Tobago. We had a council member Hobbs, who's from the Ukraine. She hosted a table. We had council member Mendoza, who's from the Philippines. She hosted a table. We had people from El Salvador, from Mexico, from Nicaragua, from, I forgot where else. Well, it just goes to show how diverse our community is. So we had a blast. People brought food. We danced. So this is something that I think is going to become hopefully an annual thing that we do. Again, just to celebrate where we're from and it doesn't have to be a country. It can be, if you're from Indiana, if you're from Ohio, if you're from Wisconsin, just come and set up a table and celebrate where you're from. Share who you are with the rest of your community. And that to me is one of the ways that we build community here. The next thing that we hosted was a self-defense workshop. It was through an organization called Defend Yourself. And we learned some techniques and some things to do to defend ourselves. One of the reasons why we hosted this workshop is because I had been hearing from a lot of people. That they saw people kind of driving slowly in town. They were feeling a little afraid. And so this is something that I had always wanted to do. And so I approached our neighborhood watch, I approached Cottage City. And they went ahead and shared the cost with us to host the self-defense workshop. And so I hope everyone that attended got something out of it. I, I did. And then obviously in November, we had Thanksgiving. So I want to thank Delegate Fennell for the turkeys that she gave to our town. I want to thank Shabak Ministries. Gwen Pope, without you, I'm not sure that we would have been able to give us out as much food as we did or the food cards that we did. So I appreciate Shabak Ministries so much. Thank you for being a critical partner of our community. I also want to thank the Charms, Charms? The Charms Inc., DC Charms Inc. So they host bingo events here at the town hall. And they asked me, what can we do to help the community? And I said, well, I need pumpkins. I need turkeys and I need gifts for Christmas and done, done, done. They did it. So I just want to say thank you to them and we'll formally recognize you in January. But thank you for the support that you've given our community. Some of the meetings that I attended, Mayor Craig Mull of Laurel retired. And that gave way to Mayor Keith Sitnor. He is the first Black mayor of Laurel. And so I was so proud to first say goodbye to Mayor Mull, but then also to welcome Mayor Sitnor into the Maryland Black Mayors. It's a passion of mine to, to make sure that we celebrate diversity at every level within our communities, within our positions of leadership. So that was a true pleasure for me. The Cade family has moved from our town. So Mr. and Mrs. Cade moved to, I think it was North Carolina or South Carolina. South Carolina to be with their daughter. So we hosted them a farewell breakfast. Thank you to everyone that came. And thank you to the Cades for everything that they've done in our community. I didn't realize the impact that they had, but they had a huge impact. They helped the youth in our town. They hosted scholarship meetings. They mentored, tutored, looked out for the kids. And neighbors like that are hard to find and we had a true treasure with them here. And I hope that we can continue their legacy of taking care of our youth. The Port Towns, which include the towns of Comer Manor, Cottage City, Bladensburg and Edmiston, hosted a Port Town quarterly meeting. At this quarterly meeting, we discussed the Port Town CDC. So for a long time, we've had a Port Town CDC. For reasons that I can't explain, it kind of went down. And so we've been talking about it as leaders in the area. So the purpose of a port of a CDC is. It's a community development corporation and a lot of the times they can apply for money that municipalities cannot. So they can actually coordinate projects for, for the poor towns that sometimes we either don't have the capacity or the money to do. And so they do play a very important role in our community. Right now, my recommendation is that we dissolve the old Port Town CDC and that we create a new one. And so I was a board member, I still am technically a board member of the Port Town CDC. And so we're planning on meeting as board members to talk about this and see if we can create and establish a new Port Town CDC, which is long overdue. And so I want to thank Denise in Cottage City and Diane for all of the work that they've been doing with that. So thank you. One other thing that I wanted to note about the Port Town's quarterly meeting is that. I was informed that people are looking at possibly placing like. I don't want to say like a youth shelter in Cottage City. And this is something that I, I know people are focusing in this area for some type of a homeless shelter. I don't, I'm not sure if there's a different term for it. But they looked in Bladensburg. Now they're looking in Cottage City. It's. I was threatened by the Michael Company about having a homeless shelter installed at the car wash lot. So this is just to say that we as a community should really think through how we want to support people who are currently unhoused. And see if there's interest or just thinking through how we can support that community and what, what we can all collectively do. I'm trying to push forward with that in regards to the poor towns. If I don't feel like we should be pushing any type of idea away, but I think that we need to think through, what is it that we would like to see? If we want to support people who are unhoused, how can we support them with housing? Last week, we had the Port Town Sector Plan Kickoff Meeting, which included the Prince George's County Planning Board. This room was full of people. And so they were currently discussing the Port Town Sector Plan. This plan is important because it talks about how we develop our community, what resources are important to us. And it really guides, guides anyone who wants to do anything within the Port Towns on zoning. And so the car wash, that vacant lot is a very important piece to this. So I was glad to see a council member at the Port Town Sector Plan Kickoff Meeting. We had the EPA Director of the East Coast, the Regional Director, Mr. Ortiz here. He actually, I believe, lives in Edmiston. We had Council Chair Ivy here. We had the Director of the Planning Board here. So people know who we are. And this is always an opportunity for us, when you see that we're having these meetings, it's an opportunity for you to come and meet these people. And talk about what do you want to see in your community? What are the issues that we're facing? I do that on my own, but I think that it's important to have everyone involved as well. So it was a good meeting. I really appreciated having them here. And we're going through this process. They want to hear from our community, especially our non-English speaking community. So please just keep an ear out for any upcoming meetings. They want to hear from the youth. So we'll definitely make sure to get those announcements out, but I'm pleading with everyone, get involved. This is, this is critical to us. And if you want to see our community get better, you need to have a voice in what's happening. So we'll make sure to push that information out as we get it. Some administrative updates, I haven't forgotten about the Emergency Operation Plan. Our website is up and running. We're, we're continuously improving on it and we're hoping to have. Launch like an official launch in January and to get some feedback on it. Again, under administrative updates, we received a letter advising of a submission of an application to develop the car wash into a gas station. So at this point, I wanted to ask our town administrator to kind of talk about that. So I know that people, well, there was an email sent out, which, which should have been discussed with us first. So I'm a little sad about that. But what does this letter actually mean in the whole scheme of things? What does this letter mean and what does it mean for the fight ahead of us? So what does this letter mean, Mr. Holcomb?
Yeah, so the letter that was received by us and various residents in town was a requirement per the zoning code. For submission of the actual plans that they are putting forward. So we've seen over the past year drawings of what the gas station could potentially look like and. Various plans through the meetings that we had and the different work sessions. Those were all what were called a soft submission to the planning department to review. And developers do that to just have comments back from the development teams over at the planning department. To say, oh, if you were to submit this, we would have questions about X, Y, and Z in your plan because you don't address them per what the zoning code says. So it's a common thing that's done by developers so that when they submit a plan, there's less kind of legwork that has to happen. And they know if it's feasible or not, or potentially feasible. And so the letter that we received, it was just an announcement that they're required to do, telling us that they are planning to submit to the. To the MNCPC. They have not done so yet. The official, it has not officially been submitted. They are planning to do so. That's why, as the mayor mentioned, the recommendation is residents can go on and be someone, a person of interest. And you can get automatic updates every time something happens with the project. I would recommend that any interested resident do that. And that was the link that was in the letter itself. So it can go there. The town is registered as that as well, so that we can also give comments and commentary as the project goes on. This is a very long process. This is not going to happen overnight. I would estimate that it's a good year plus. And a good example of that is right next door. March of last year, the, the church was doing, basically doing work to do plans for a solar, solar ray and solar panels on their building. And they finally had a hearing this last September. So, and that was, I'm sorry, March of 2022, they started doing that. And they finally had their first of many hearings in September of this year. And so there's, this is a very long process that we are facing. But we will try to keep you updated as best we can as we learn more about it.
So what does this mean for us? What is, how does this affect the work that I'm doing? How does it affect us as council members? So. I found out about this in the summer of, or the spring of 2022. And I attended the meetings that then Councilmember Doug Bowles was hosting. And so I was a part of those meetings and I, I had listened and I also participated in them. My strategy has been to try to work with the Michael Company along with Andy Stern. We invited them here. They came here. I thought that they were amenable to that. I thought that we could build a relationship. And they don't want to talk about anything except having a gas station here. So the conversation stalled. In addition to that, the additional strategy behind this was. When a group of residents started convening, the same group that was convening before to talk about the situation. Had come up with a name for their group called Resist, which the mission sounded very much like the Green Team. And so I asked the members of that group, please join the Green Team. This is, this is what the Green Team is tasked with doing in our community. It, it makes sense for everyone to be involved and for there not to be these separate groups. And on top of that, the Green Team has some, some power to actually suggest. Legislation to the town and whatnot. So it, it just made it a little, like a stronger group of people. The Green Team in and of itself has had some issues kind of taking off the ground. Currently, the lead of the Green Team is Sal Messina, who lives in town. Sadara was a part of it, former Mayor Sadara Barrow, but she, I, I don't know what's been happening with her, but she hasn't been involved as much as of late. And so I asked Ms. Jones if she would help Sal lead the Green Team. And so they've been talking. But even before then, Sal had been bringing this up, the, the whole gas station issue in the Green Team meetings. While that's been going on, the town administrator and myself have been meeting with our county council representative. And so. Can you explain what happened with the county? She's, she's a chair, actually, county council chair.
Yeah, there was a couple of things happening. One, I was keeping in touch with the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Staff. I was overseeing the project from the soft submission and keeping in touch with them about the project. And then Councilwoman Ivy's office, we had reached out to them through the course of everything. Council Chair Ivy, well, at the time, Council Member Ivy, the Chief of Staff and her chief legislative person all came out to the site. We did a site tour. We did measurements at the site. Councilwoman Ivy made me do three measurements to make sure that I measured correctly each time. Which I thought was kind of funny to have a county council person do that with you. But, and the reason being is that, and they went over this with, with me, is that there were two ordinances passed by the county in the last year. One actually was at the very end of the last session, so December of 2022. And one that happened at the beginning of the session in 2023, that puts severe restrictions on gas stations under the new zoning code. And so there is a very, very tight window that the developer potentially could develop this gas station if they wanted to, but it's very, very tight. After that happens, after that, that demarcation line happens, gas pumps can't be within 300 feet of a residence. Hence why we were measuring, which almost takes it from, in fact, I think it was measuring from Ms. Jones' house, straight through. The 300 foot mark was roughly midway through the parking space closest to Bladensburg Road. And so the code also says, current code and old code says it has to be, I think it's 25 feet from the street. And that took it to the other side of the parking, that same parking spot. So. Again, there's a very small timeline where that, there's a potential there, but that's what they were going over. After that meeting, the county councilwoman actually invited me out to the county building and I met with the county council's. Attorney that does land use planning law for the county council. And she's just there to give them information, recommendations, if they ask for it, things along those lines. And she too had huge reservations and questions about the ability for the developer to actually develop on site. And so we do have those resources available to us and have been lent to us over the past few months.
So we have been working on this issue over, over the past year and a half. So part of my job is to build relationships with our elected officials, which we've been doing and then bring in. My staff to come and talk to them and get acclimated and have them hear what it is that the town wants. So I just want to make clear, we don't want a gas station. We're fighting the gas station. In addition to that, we've been advocating this to Senator Augustine. Delegate Fennell knows about this. Delegate, Delegate Ivy knows about this. I talk about it at the Prince George's County Municipal Association. When we, when I met with Lieutenant Governor Rona Miller, when Mayor James hosted a meeting with all the Port Town leaders, I brought it up there as well. So there are things that I'm doing, that we're doing to address the situation. So for me, when we don't act in line with each other, it could potentially, it could potentially set us back. And so I am, I am a little frustrated currently. Because again, I want to work together as a group. And so there are times when I have not agreed with Councilmember Harding. There are times when I have not agreed with Councilmember Mendoza. There are times when I have not agreed with Councilmember Hobbs. We always were respectful to each other, always. And at the end of the day, we all have a passion for our community and are working hard for our community. For people to disrespect me, to hang up on me, to talk over me. And to interrupt the flow of the work that we're doing to me is, is not helping. It doesn't help. So I've made a plea to all the council, let's work together because we have to. So that, I want to be completely transparent. I'm not hiding anything and I think people know. And if I ever have an issue or if I ever have a doubt or if I, if I have a question, I don't have an issue calling people and talking to them. I will never hang up on you, even if we disagree. So that's, that's, that's that. So just rest assured, we're working on it. We're in the beginning processes. I really need to get help and assistance with the Green Team. So the same people that were passionate before need to become passionate again. And I think that there are different ways that we can do this. It's the Green Team. It's inviting people that are potential developers to kind of survey the land and let us know what are the possibilities with this. It's, it's coming up with a creative solution to this problem that we have. But it takes a whole village to do that. And I hope that we can all work together to do it. So initiatives and projects. So we're still going through the charter review plan. So thank you to everyone that's a part of the charter review and who have been meeting on a weekly basis. Thank you to our town administrator, to Councilmember Mendoza and all the residents that are a part of that. We have a strategic plan. It's on our website. We need feedback. So there's a questionnaire on our website that you can fill out. If you don't feel like filling out the questionnaire, email us. If you don't feel like emailing us, stop by, write something on a piece of paper. Give us feedback. That's what's going to help us with all of our ideas. And this is a strategic plan that we've shared with, with the council. We don't do anything without sharing it with our council and getting consensus from the council. The monthly budget meeting. So I want to start having, thank you to our town clerk and treasurer for hosting the tax info session that we had at six o'clock. So I would like to have these monthly budget meetings starting in January where I invite people to just come. We, if you have an idea of a way to improve our community, or if you have questions about anything on the budget, just come. We pass a budget in June, but we're working, starting now, towards, in that budget process. And if you have anything that concerns you, if, if you're interested in the presentation tonight from Avio, then we're going to have to find $40,000, actually $50,000 to see how we can fund that. Safe passage. So again, Avio mentioned two children, a five-year-old. I think it was a five-year-old and a 10-year-old that got killed. They got run over in Riverdale, crossing the street to go to school. He's not lying when he's talking about a crisis. There's a crisis going on right now. Someone this morning died. A pedestrian got hit on rigs in front of my daughter's school. They got hit and died by a car. On Bladensburg, same thing. Couple of months ago, a woman got hit and she died. This is happening, happening in front of our community, in our community. We just saw a video of people just rolling through stop signs. So this is just to say that it's a real issue. And if you want to vote your values and vote, you know, or allocate money in the budget towards your values, this is one way to do it. But I'm continuing to advocate for this on a, on a countywide level. So I'm thankful to the school board member, Jocelyn Rout, for working with me. I've met with her and a couple of other people to work towards safe passage for, for kids. And then finally, some of the ideas that Greg and I are working on in regards to earmarks for Congressman, Congressman Ivy, is some capital projects that include a public works garage, more funding for the Larrace Park, and then our town hall needs some TLC. So these are some things that we're thinking through trying to figure out, how can we ask for money or apply for grants towards these things? Some upcoming events are the Christmas event that's happening on Saturday from 12 to three by the Larrace, on the Larrace lot, we're going to have some cookie decorating. We're going to give out gifts to the kids. We're going to have Santa Claus there. We're going to have some hot cocoa and some marshmallow toasting. If you'd like to donate any gifts for the kids, please bring them. We have a mailbox that you can write a letter to Santa and we're hoping that we get more letters so we know what to, we know what to ask Santa for so that they get what they want on Saturday. We're having a youth summit next week. So this is again, a way to engage the youth and they have a lot to say on what they want to see in their community. So thank you to our rec coordinator for hosting that. We're having a family movie night on the 21st of December. I think it's The Grinch That Stole Christmas. So that's going to be a lot of fun. So come on out if you're not too busy Christmas shopping, then just come over and watch a movie with us. Oh, and I have the budget monthly meetings on here again, so. These are some of the photos. I don't know if you can see them, but Janelle here with the sun, well, Ms. Dorit is wearing sunglasses too, but with the purse. She is the new resident that inspired the cultural community celebration. She's also a veteran. Ms. Dorita is a veteran. Here, we're at the Peace Cross with Councilmember Harding. Here, we're at the American Legion, having a really beautiful lunch. Here are some photos of the police against the kids and I didn't think the police officers had a chance against these kids, but they won twice. So kudos to you guys. You're, you're in good tip-top shape. And here are some photos of the self-defense workshop. I don't know if you can tell here, this resident is really getting into the punching of the bag. Here is Ms. Della with the DC Charms Inc. with her. They created these boxes with food that we distributed. And here we are, the, our electric vehicle with all the bags of food that we received from Shabak. And we just went around town targeting some seniors and low-income people who, who requested and needed food. Whenever we can, we try to, we try to provide. And here you have the kids and they're going away breakfast. It was a really, it was a really nice event. So again, they, they will be missed. And here we have Chair Ivy and the Director of the Planning Board at the Port Town Sector Plan Meeting. They had some interactive activities where you could talk about things that you like in the community, things that you would change, some ideas that you have. And here in the, in the tie is the first black mayor of Laurel, Mr. Sidnor. And down here, the woman in the seats. I invited a couple of residents to come with me to a listening session with the Hispanic, the Prince George's Hispanic Lees on who wanted to hear from the community on what their needs are. And that's pretty much it on my end. So I'll go ahead and turn it over now to Councilmember Harding to give his council member updates.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I also appreciate everyone that took the time to come out tonight and join us in person. No, it's a bit cold outside, so thank you very much. But my report is very short. I had the pleasure to have a Zoom meeting with the Milton Matthews Foundation. They're a faith-based nonprofit that do work in Maryland and DC. The conversation was very interesting, seeing how a lot of the things that they do overlap with some of the issues that we have here. One of the main things being their approach on homelessness. So we had some very, very intriguing conversations that I hope we continue. I'm planning to have another meeting with them so we can further massage that idea. But another approach that we're having was a food pantry. And I believe the mayor spoke about this in our last town hall meeting, that this was something that she would like to have. And within our conversation, we are looking to do another, well, looking to do a walkthrough and see the perspective of our health center that's on 43rd. Correct me if I'm wrong, too. The health center on, by the Jiffy Loop? Okay, 43. And see if that's a possible place for a food pantry. And I think that would be great for our community. Just the accessibility, as the mayor just said, for people that may be in need. Going forward, I also had a meeting with Leslie Felice of Greenwell this past weekend. And it was a really good conversation. One, it was really exciting to know how much depth knowledge she had of Comer Manor. It made me feel really good about, at least what they're speaking upon for us when they go and speak to our officials and the stakeholders out there. But more so for me, it was good to give her a better picture as a longstanding resident about the things that I've experienced and how it's grown into what it is now. And the continued issues that we've had and how I need their help in getting more outreach as far as them hearing from you all, so that we can all come up with a consensus on the idea on how to approach this. Because when they go to the office, they, I mean, when they go to the House of the State Building, they've spoken to us and heard Greg a billion times, but it's better to hear it from the community, at least in my opinion. So that was that. And my last message, I typed up something there for the people on Zoom, but from heart to heart, happy holidays to everyone. Around this time, it's always difficult. It's always difficult. But I really am happy that I'm able to share this time with you all. I'm really happy that I've been able to be on council and experience the people the way I have at a different capacity than a resident, because now I feel more available to you all. A lot of times we're closed off in our home, but I have to be out here and I have to involve myself with the community. So I really appreciate that. But moreover, I want everyone to be so thankful for the time they have with the people that they love. I always go back to what I'm doing in my job, but it's just, it's so much that I get to learn and get to experience from the people that I work with and the arc and how family is just really important as a support system. And you always need a village for that. So I'm really, really, really appreciative of the supportive, support system we have here as a community. And I see it in everything we do, especially with the mayor. So thank you all.
Thank you. So Ward Two, Councilmember Hobbs asked that I read her update because she's currently on a bus. So she participated in the Culture Day, set up a table representing Ukrainian culture. She would like to thank everyone who participated and attended the event. It was a great opportunity to learn about the cultural makeup of our residents. Happy holiday season to all the residents. A reminder to be mindful of your neighbors when celebrating. Keep the noise level down as per the town noise ordinance. Fireworks are illegal in Prince George's County. Please do not leave your pets outside in the cold. Be safe and well. So thank you for those reminders. I, I think that we'll also be pushing that messaging out. Fireworks are illegal in Prince George's County. I know that we all want to party for Christmas and for New Year's or for Hanukkah or, or, you know, what you celebrate around this time of year. But please be courteous and considerate of your neighbors while you celebrate. Ward Three, Councilmember Brooks, I'll just go ahead and share his updates. He'd like to wish everyone a safe and wonderful holiday season and thank you for allowing us to serve the community of Comer Manor. Resident comments, a couple of residents have voiced their opinion to ensure that the Charter Review Committee reviews the entire charter and not just parts of it. A few residents have voiced their opinion in opposition to, and then he talks about the plan for the gas station. Councilmember for Ward Three agrees with the opposition to a gas station. A couple of residents have voiced their concerns regarding the Larrace Park Visioning Project with respect to egress. They have requested we follow up with the fire department to ensure the closing of 40th Street does not pose a concern. Others have voiced the opinion that the town council ensure adequate funding is secured to maintain the property once any initial grant funding is depleted to prevent the area from becoming an eyesore. Oops. Sorry. So I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember, Councilmember Mendoza, do you want me to, to share your update?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay, so Councilmember Mendoza, she wants to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. May this year bring Comer Manor all the opportunities and success. Let's make the most of the New Year together. This year has been full of so many accomplishments and I look forward to seeing what we can do together in the New Year. Thank you very much for that, Councilmember Mendoza. I want to go back to one of the updates the council member from Ward Three mentioned in regards to the charter review process. We had been planning the charter review process for months. And we came up with a process as a council. No one cherry picked anything. We were recommended by a couple of different lawyers that to be an efficient way of reviewing the charter would be to look through the charter and talk about the most pressing items. Because there are things in, in the charter in and of itself that don't necessarily need to be reviewed. And it takes a longer time, especially for people that aren't accustomed to, with finance or whatnot. It's just normal language that you would have in a charter. So really, when you're looking at the charter, you want to take a look at the things that, that need to be updated. And so we, as a council, sat down and we went through every section, every article to see what needs to be updated. Not once did anyone dissent or say, no. This, we need to change this or we need to review how we're doing this. Not once. So we, as a council, all agreed, every single one of us. Am I wrong? I'm not wrong. So it's kind of like when you're doing something and then you want to change the rules because they don't suit what you want to do or what you're hearing, it doesn't make sense. We all agreed to this process. We announced the process. Everyone had access to the process because we have talked about it at work sessions. We talked about it in our town council meetings. So the process was there. It was open. It was transparent. So I just want to make that clear. And one of the things that I forgot to mention actually, and one of my updates is that in the coming year, there will be elections for the council. And so if there's anyone interested in running, please think about running. And I am hoping to be able to coordinate some work sessions that'll help you. So if you're thinking about running, but you don't know where to start, you don't know what your role is, I want to have some work sessions that'll help you through that. So that people can understand, even if you, if you don't want to run, it's a good practice to learn what it is that we do exactly and how we function and work as a team and as a town. So that's pretty much it in regards to our reports. So I'd like to go ahead and open it now for resident comments. So anyone who's here, feel free to come up to the, to the podium and just say your name and the street that you live on. And if you're online, feel free to raise your hand and do the same.
Amen. All right. I'm a resident of Towne of Chevelle. My name is Sean Patrick McGuire. I guess it's called Ward Two. Sorry to be, okay, I thought, okay. All right. Sorry, my train of thought. Okay. I have questions about, you're talking about the gas station. It kind of reminds me, the gas station we had in the Towne of Chevelle on the edge of my, the ward. He is a council member. He's across the street from me. Anyway. So Michael and Company, what, what is, is it an example of like a Wawa, you know, on 450, for example? And I guess the question is, what do you hate about it? Because, and is there a grandfathering that's within a timeline? They're trying to sneak in, Michael and Company? I had all these questions and suddenly, okay, I give up. So I gotta get my reclaim my mindset here. Okay, I think I threw, okay, so you're against it because the, because the grandfathering required whatever? Or, I mean, I'm against the idea because it's, it's, it's putting industrial kind of, instead of a mix that's good for PG County. I guess, so basically, I guess, is, there was also, is it possible it could have been a truck stop, for example? Instead of not simple, it's open like 12 hours a day and the nearby residents would be impacted by that. And against personally, it's all not for it. I'm just wondering, when he was describing this, the administrator or whatever, what does this mean? A sliver of time, what is it, a quarter, a month, a day you were doing that? What did that mean? You know, within a grandfathering?
Yes.
Okay. Well, what did this mean? I'm just wondering.
Yes. There's, there's a slight timeframe from when the
I'm sorry.
From when the ordinance was passed until it goes, went into effect, until the developer has to not only introduce what the proposal is, but it has to be approved.
Okay.
So essentially by April of 2024, the developer has to both submit and have it approved according to the second ordinance that was passed.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, I thought it was like 30 days. I was wondering what you meant. Okay. I wonder if it's the same regurgitation of ideas that Chevelle was against, that they just moved someplace else. So I'm just wondering. I wonder if it's the same regurgitation of ideas that Chevelle was against, that they just moved someplace else. So I'm just wondering. Okay, that's fascinating. And the traffic stopping idea, it's very, the Town of Chevelle, I always hear that we have speeders, we have signs, we want to have traffic stops and all that. It's a good idea. So I'm going to give the card to the administrator. We're having a meeting this Thursday, so. And I'm just trying to get the, I did three or four questions and I, we're also trying to get the youth to vote and whatever, be part of the community and be helping, you know, you know, and voice their opinion. So I had these ideas, I gave up and whatever, eh, whatever. So, um, okay, I guess that's it. And I'm thankful for your time.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come up?
My name is James Thomas. I live on 42nd Avenue. I live in Comer Manor. Is Public Works ever going to get the leaves up?
Yes. So they are going to be working on Tuesdays and Thursdays to clean up leaves. In the newsletter, we pointed out they're splitting the town up in halves and so they'll start working in one half, the other half on the, the second day. We've had some equipment issues and we've had some staffing scheduling issues. Requires three people to man, man the machine. And one of the people is only part-time and is only here until 11:00 AM. And so from the time they can start working from nine until 11, there's been a reduced amount that we've been able to do on top of some of the weather events that we've had and the equipment failure that we had, even after testing it over the summer. Of course, still managed to fail on us. So, but they are slowly going back out and doing that.
Okay. I had an idea about the crosswalk at where the the, the stop sign at, what was it? Forty, is it 40th and Newark, Newark? Would painted crosswalks be a possible deterrents? You know, the real, the real painted ones?
Yes. So one of the goals that I've had and I've been putting into grants to try to do this outside of just one area is there is, there's not a single crosswalk in the Town of Comer Manor outside of Bladensburg Road that the state put in. And so I would like to put crosswalks at least on Newark, if not Newton and Newark. But we've actually looked at doing road art as well. And so not just your traditional crosswalks with painted crosswalks, like a, you know, just white lines.
Right.
But actually doing something more artistic with that and been working with the Neighborhood Design Center on trying to come up with a concept for that. They have compiled a bunch of studies. They've actually written a kind of a book on it that was federally funded. And out of those studies that they've showed that it slows people down, it protects pedestrians. And they, just every study shows that just painting the crosswalks in some way that isn't just white lines actually has a major effect on, on calming traffic. So that is something that we've been researching and trying to identify and, and implement is the next step.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. So we have someone online, Gloria Perea. If you'd like to go ahead and go un, unmute yourself and state the street you live on and ask your question. That's a good question. Is the, is the interpreter on? Yeah. So it's, it's to vote against it. So that's the, so she was asking if there's a way to vote against it. And the short answer is yes. At the end of the day, we don't own that property. So it's kind of like telling someone, you can't buy, buy a house there because we're voting against you buying a house there. They own the property. So I think it's about working through the zoning that currently exists and working with our elected officials. But as I mentioned, it also entails us working as a community. So some of the things that I've been thinking through that I've been wanting to do actually for a long time is get the press more involved to start covering this story because at the end of the day, we are a low-income, black and brown community. So there is an exploitive nature to this. When you have someone that lives in Bethesda, that's wealthy, that wants to install a gas station in Comer Manor, we have an overabundance of gas stations in our community. We have an overabundance of liquor stores in our community. We have an overabundance of fast food chains in our community. And I think that we want, we want to, we want to just, yeah, we want to improve our quality of life. And so it means getting the press here, start collecting stories, take photos, think creatively around this issue. I wish that we could vote something where we'd say, no, you can't move here, but, but this is the United States of America. And we can't do that when it comes to property owners. Do you want to add to that?
The only thing I was going to add was that unfortunately in Maryland municipalities have very little very little control over land use. So the county controls all the, the actual zoning. The towns do not. So under the zoning, we, we have to rely on the county to kind of go through that process. But that does not stop voices from being expressed in that process of opposition.
And, and I'm thankful, you know, when, when an email was sent out and it was sent out to a bunch of elected officials without us being told beforehand, the first quickest reply was from Council Chair Ivy. And so I'm so grateful to her, but it's because we've been fostering this relationship with her. And so, but at the end of the day, it's not just her either. So this takes a coordinated effort on many different levels with many different people. So at some point, we may have to go to one of these meetings where they're reviewing the application. We may have to be present at, at all of these discussions, either in person or via Zoom. We might have to like stand in front of the gas station with big signs to say, no, we don't want a gas station here. So there are lots of things that we can do, but we need to, again, come together, think through the strategy and see what are, what are the, the components? What are the things that we want to do? So I see, is there anyone here in person that wants to ask a question? I see someone online, so iPhone, I see iPhone too. Go ahead and ask your question. Your name and the street you live on.
Hi Monica, this is Fanny. I'm on 43rd Avenue and I don't believe, I mean, to me, have another gas station in, in this area, it would be too much. We already have one, two, almost three, you know, if you count the one by IHOP and then the one on the other side by La Chusita, I believe that's the name. And then the one on Easter Avenue. It's like too many in one, in one little section, in one little area. And then the traffic is going to be horrible. I mean, the traffic is already, already bad. And it's going to be worse, worse. And having a gas station in this area, it will be really, really, really bad for us, for the community. And I, I'm a hundred percent, I disagree with that.
Thank you very much. I think that you have a bunch of people here that agree with you. We don't want a gas station. Actually, I, I believe we have 20 gas stations within a one and a half mile radius, 20. Within a one and a half mile radius. So I think we're good on gas. And really, we should be thinking about electric. So are there any other questions or comments from anyone online? Okay, so with no more resident comments, we're towards the, the end of our agenda. We're, we're on number 10 under action. So we have new business. So I'll go ahead and let town administrator Holcomb go ahead and go through those items.
So the, the item before you is the, we had a one-year extension of a contract with, with Michael, Thomas Michael LLC, which is Mr. Hemmer, who was our ARPA consultant. That expires now at the end of December. So the question is, do we, do we need him for another year or their firm for another year through, through ARPA? And so as we had discussed in the previous work sessions and meetings, the we did the loss revenue. We were going to reallocate the funds towards current expenses so that we could build a larger reserve and use that for future projects. Under that scenario, we wouldn't necessarily need Mr. Hemmer for a year. And his annual contract is eighteen.
Fifteen hundred a month, eighteen thousand annually.
Yeah. So fifteen hundred dollars a month, eighteen thousand dollars annually. And so I think the recommendation would be as an unneeded or as needed basis. Just do month to month as needed until we finish out with the ARPA funds.
My suggestion would not be monthly. It would be hourly versus a fixed amount per month. Because we don't know, there, there's roughly of the cert, 1.3 million dollars we had available after we finished the street sidewalk project, there's probably around 400,000 left. We need to determine, you know, what we're going to use those fun, that those funds for. And at this point, we don't know if we would need him to help administer that. So I would recommend saving the, the monthly amount and just ask him if we could enter into a, a, a new agreement or amend the current agreement to retain him on narrowly basis versus a fixed fee. He's been very helpful, you know, in the programs that we set up, the, you know, the resident assistance programs and those types. But, you know, I, I don't think, you know, having him on retainer for 1,500 dollars a month makes sense at this point when we don't know what direction we're going with those remaining funds. And if we even need them at all, I'd rather save those funds and implement it into projects instead of just spending it for a consultant that we may not need.
So what's the action that we would take tonight? Is it not to continue the, the yearly contract with Mr. Hemmer?
Well, the contract ends anyway. So if you take no action, it ends. So I would say the action tonight would be to ask Mr. Hemmer for a proposal to continue the contract on a narrowly basis as needed. Does that make sense, Greg? I mean, consensus would be, well, the money's budgeted. So if you all, I, I would say via motion, then we won't have to bring it back. We just amend the agreement. So yes, the motion would be appropriate. So the motion would be to amend or to amend the current agreement with Thomas Michael LLC to provide for a hourly rate, rate instead of a monthly retainer.
Councilmember Harding makes the motion as stated.
Councilmember Melinda Mendoza, I will second that.
Is there any discussion on this?
I appreciate for your in-depth knowledge, my ray of sunshine.
You're welcome.
If there is no further discussions, I'll go ahead and call a vote. So all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? So the ayes have it? Okay, great. So the next item on the action bullet is unfinished business, the strategic plan and the Lyracy Park conceptual plan.
So I've included both of these items simply to put them back out into the public so that we can get comments or feedback from them. You all can take action on them at any point in time by having them on the agenda. But I think the strategic plan needs a little more time out in public for people to digest and give more feedback on. So I do encourage the public to do that. But yeah, so there's no, no need to take action on that one. And then on the second item with the Lyracy Park conceptual plan, again, if you want, I put this on there so that it's back out. This has been out now well over a couple of months. We've done a survey on it. If you are interested in moving forward with it tonight, you could, or you could hold off on that as well to try to gather some more feedback or to wait to the full councils here, what have you. But that's, I leave that up to you.
I was just going to pose the question to you, Mayor. Well, pose this question so that the public has the information. This is only a conceptual plan. So us accepting this, there's still room. Yes.
Correct. Yes. No, that's a very good point. I brought that up in the work session. It's a drawing. Essentially, it's a, it's a pretty picture, not to make it, to bring light and make it too, uh, too insignificant, but it is just a, a drawing, an idea that was being proposed. But to show us what it could look like, you know, moving forward, a good example of something similar that the town has done in the past was the Green Street. So the Green Street conceptual plan was done with public input and they put, did a design and they did a drawing. There's aspects of the Green Street that in the drawing can't happen, just they physically can't happen anymore. There's, in fact, an intersection that we're having designed right now that isn't even part of the Green Street conceptual plan. But we had extra money out of that Jessica Bay Trust Grant. And so we were able to get a whole extra intersection included in the Green Street outside of the conceptual plan, but still utilizing the general design that they gave us. So yes, by, by passing or approving this as a conceptual plan, essentially what this allows me to do then as staff is to then look for the funding to do a, a design build plan. And that's when you get into more of a concrete, brick and mortar type project. Once that plan's done, then we have to find money again to then find the construction money. So there's still many layers to this. But yeah, there's, there's definitely some still room in there for things to change as part of this.
Well, based on the fact that during our work session, there was no objection to my understanding to the conceptual plan. Do you feel like it's okay to? Or that I make the motion to accept? Or would it be better to have the entire council?
To your prerogative, what I will say is that if we, if we approve it, it gives our town administrator, yeah, the, the green light to, oh. Oh, si me puede dar como dos minutos? Yeah. Gives him the green light to start going and looking for money.
Based off the information I received, Councilmember Harding makes the motion to accept our Lyracy Park conceptual plan?
Councilmember Hobbs seconded.
So Councilman. Okay. So I'd like to recognize that Councilmember Hobbs joined the meeting, actually probably about an hour ago. So I'd like to recognize her. And so if, is there any discussion on this? Okay. So if there is no discussion, I'd like to go ahead and call a vote. So all in favor, say aye. Aye. Did she say? Who said nay? Oh, sorry. Can I get a roll call then? But let's just, yeah. Okay, Ward One.
Present?
Uh, Councilmember Harding.
Aye.
Uh, Ward Two, Councilmember Hobbs.
Aye.
Ward Four, Councilmember Mendoza.
Aye.
Yeah. Okay, so, so the ayes have it. Oh, and I vote aye as well. Sorry about that. Yes, thank you. Okay, so I think that that's, that's it. So I just want to wish everyone from the bottom of my heart.
I have one thing, Mayor.
Oh. Go ahead.
It's really, it's, 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 it's kind of a nothing, but to me, it's a something. And that is regardless, we have Rick, who's our AV guy, who's remote and Mark in the back. And I don't know if you've noticed tonight with the Zoom, I've been no hands. I haven't had to juggle the, my, my friend over here, the speaker box, which has allowed those on Zoom and us to have a dialogue without the feedback. It's thanks to some equipment. So, and we can, we've kind of tested it, but if either of the council members would like to say something that we can, it's been going on all night. I told Melinda I might call on her.
It, it sounds good.
Let's see. No hands, Mom, so. That's all I have.
And actually, we have someone that has a hand up. Sorry about that. Sorry. So they had a question. So Patricia, can you please ask your question and then I'll ask the interpreter to interpret into English? Okay, so in the chat she has, I have a comment in regards to the second lane that is closed, that has been closed for many years by the light, by the compare supermarket. Is it possible to fix this issue? It's just that in the mornings, there's a lot of traffic and there's a lot of people who drive on that side.
Single laner, correct? So I think, I think she's referencing the single lane at the bridge going over Julian Creek by IHOP. This, so there is an issue underneath the road, the foundation of the bridge. However, the State Highway Administration has stated that they were going to be removing that and directing pedestrian traffic over to our side of the street because we have a pedestrian bridge now. And so the reason the roadway is closed down over there is because they were utilizing that is the makeshift bridge because both bridges, pedestrian bridges were out at the same time. So now that we have a brand new bridge on our side, they're going to reroute the traffic or the pedestrian traffic to our side and then reopen that lane. They told us they were going to do this about two months ago and said it was imminent. And so I don't know what happened there, but that is a very good question and I will look into that.
All right. Thank you very much. So with that said, I would like to wish everyone, all the council, everyone that's volunteered, everyone that's helped in the town, given something, showed up to meetings, yelled at me, yelled at any other council members, yelled at Greg. I want to wish everyone from the bottom of my heart, a beautiful holiday season. Celebrate life. Please stay healthy. Please get your vaccines and spend time with your family. And thank you for being a part of our community. So thank you. With that, I'd like to request a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Councilmember Harding, I'll make the motion as stated.
Councilmember Melinda Mendoza, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Happy New Year. See you next year.